All right, call a roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz. Vice Mayor Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum, Vice Mayor.
Need a motion to excuse.
I make a motion to excuse Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes. Motion to excuse. Call a roll.
Sure. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Join me with your pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which ascends, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, guys, this is not a sprint, it's a marathon. Everybody catch your breath.
All right, I want to thank everybody for coming out, even though it was raining real hard. And we'll get into this. So, how many speakers do we have?
Vice Mayor, we have three, so you want me to start calling them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sure. Tim Wilder is first, and I apologize if I butcher your last name.
Good evening, Tim Wilder, Durango Estates, Pembroke Pines, your neighbors to the west. It's been brought to our attention by actually one of your residents. They're talking about an incinerator that's to be put in place, I believe at Sheridan Street, and US 27. We knew nothing about this. I can tell you and speak for probably ninety-nine percent of our residents, we are totally against this. We've heard nothing from our commissioners in response to any of this. I provided documentation to you guys from Broward County. And the way it was worded, I find very problematic when they mention the word "authority." Twenty-one times in two paragraphs. And what I'm being told is that this authority is going to have an executive director, be crazy salaries, the way it sounds, and they're going to tell us what they're going to do, and how they're going to tax us. That's very problematic. They're not elected officials, from what I understand, who this group would be. So, we hope you guys can look into this as our neighboring city, and I certainly hope you don't support this thing. I've heard things rumored, whether true or not. There may be even medical waste going to be burned here. Now, we're waiting for documentation to find out if that's factual. Certainly, we don't want that in our backyard. We've got enough problems with the landfill and other things out there. And our Everglades right on the doorstep of this. My god, the fallout would be irreversible, in my view. And we just wanted to make sure tonight that we bring that to your attention, and provide you a little bit of information that, thanks to one of, again, one of your residents, that passed it on to me, and I'm bringing it to your attention now. So, just the documents that I gave you, if you could read them briefly, and just tell us if you've seen this document before, or have you, do you know anything about this? And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Second speaker is Keith. I'm sorry, it's hard to read your last name, but you have an amazing first name.
Really?
If you could just spell your last name.
P-A-I-K-I-N, Keith Paykin. And I'm also neighbors with Tim. And when he brought the, basically, I was going to say the exact same thing, he beat me to it. But when I found out about it, that's exactly how I found out about it, when he knocked at the door and said, "Hey, by the way, not sure you know about this." Well, I looked into it, and, you know, I have horses, you know, livestock. We moved out there for, you know, clean living, and kind of get away from the city and whatnot. But to know that something like that can come into, not only us, but you, everyone else, the environmental impact on something like that is devastating, irreversible. What it's going to do to all the fish and the water and the wildlife out there, I'm sure you all know. You've done studies on this. And I've also heard, it's a rumor, I'm not sure, but if they're going to be burning stuff like that, there's medical, there's medical waste perhaps, that was brought to my attention. I don't know if you all know about that, but that would be just devastating. And then, of course, you know, some of the older people in the community, think about it. You have emphysema, COPD, whatever it is. There's going to be issues there. There's got to be another way of handling this. But then, when it was also brought to my attention, that they're going to try to, you know, have us pay for this, that's just absolutely ridiculous. So hopefully, you know, you're all behind us, because it's going to impact all the communities. And it's really going to reach everybody. It's not just isolated to that one facility and that area, which is, I believe it's going to be US 27 and Sheridan, I think. But think about it, the impact and devastation it's going to have, it's just irreversible. So, here, you know, here again, that's, I just wanted to bring it up. A lot of us know about it. And I feel like it was kind of like snuck in under the covers, you know, and it's just, it's sad. It's, that's it, that's all I have to say. But thank you, appreciate you listening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Third speaker is David Brubeck. And then the, then we have Noel Hollingsworth and Dee Schroeder.
Thank you for allowing me, as a guest and not a resident, to speak at your meeting. I appreciate it, I appreciate the resolution you've passed already to oppose this. How can we help? We're here to help, I'm here to help. As a, I've been a Dade County resident probably since eighty-nine, Kendall. Worked with several major community service groups, dealt with all kinds of city councils and communities. And there's been a lack of transparency in Pembroke Pines, it's been rather concerning. And we didn't know about this, and we had to hear, you know, obliquely from you guys. And it's already a big plan. Obviously, environmental concerns may be something. I would like to also add to that, the schools that are out there. Not just West Broward is there, Franklin Academy is there, Somerset Academy is quite large, it's tucked away. You may not know, some of you may not know that's there, and there's some other middle schools and elementary schools. So, if there's anything we can do to help, please let us know. We're one hundred percent behind this, and I think we could marshal significant numbers of our community. I'd also like to mention that I have some communications which may be of interest to some of you in your efforts. The other thing I wanted to mention is about the gate on Maritza Medina Way. And we had a little bit of concern with Pembroke Pines not adding, having significant notice, thirty days, adequate notice for meetings, and not really getting the tenor of the people. And I asked one of your representatives, was there any effort to extend a helping or cordial or coordinating attempt? And the response I got was, no. And so, I have a couple of proposals, and, yeah, pretty, yeah, I understand. So anyway, I think our community would be.
You ready?
Okay, are we ready?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, Mr. Brubeck was finishing up.
Yes, sir.
I just, first, I was remiss in saying how kind I've been treated every time I've come. I just want to make sure that you know how welcoming and how kind the people of Southwest Ranches. And you, at the center, have been fantastic, so thank you so much, kudos.
Definitely pass that along to Mr. Goodback there, he likes hearing that.
Anyway, yeah, so, the other point, just springing in my mind about the earlier point about the incinerator is, you know, you have a range of properties here from one acre to ten acres or smaller. And it would be, what they're doing to us is would be akin to you punishing your ten-acre holders, your big taxpayers, you know. We are, in Pembroke Pines, a part of the one, two, three-acre larger lots. And it should be something they should be proud of, and not making this part of Broward an armpit. And as far as this part of Broward, you know, as you all realize, we're this, kind of the heart of the megalopolis. You can get to Miami from here, you can do business, and this should be a showpiece, and not an industrial armpit. But with regards to the gate, what I had suggested, I had three suggestions. My recollection was, and the documentation is, that they had the meetings, and it was less than one week notice, it was ridiculous. But one of the suggestions that I had was that we offer two passes to everyone who lives west of one hundred and forty, eighty-fourth, or, excuse me, west of I-75, who are Southwest Ranches residents, to the gate at Maritza Medina. And then allowed anyone else who wanted to have one, a chance to purchase one, a one-time offer for that. And we were hoping to build our community's support for that. And if we came to you with that offer, we were hoping to have some kind of idea that that would be, might be welcome, if we were to support or come together with regards to the gate at Maritza Medina, and having just passes for all the folks who live around here, whether, either side of the gate. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your kindness.
Thank you. Noel Hollingsworth.
Good evening, Noel Hollingsworth, One Hundred Ninety-Ninth Avenue. I attended the incinerator work group that independently meets over in the conference room this evening, just before this meeting. Learned something interesting, which I already knew in the back of my head. Two and a half years ago, we had a group from Broward County and Fort Lauderdale show up here and tell us they were forming a group to study this. But it was a design-build they were going to do on an incinerator. And when they went outside, they didn't say where. I asked them where, and they said, "At the dump here, the county-owned property." And that where they planned to put it was as close to where the landfill is right now. And I said, "Well, it really needs to be, if you're going to do it," or by twenty-seven in Pembroke Pines, Sheridan. So, but they said, "Well, it's going to happen." And it still is their mindset when they came here recently. That is their mindset. Come hell or high water, it's going to be a design-build garbage incinerator. What everyone I heard this evening, the few people from Pembroke Pines that showed up, that showed interest, I would like to ask them if they would be interested in joining the information group that we have. I'd like for Pembroke Pines commissioners to make the information noticed to everyone within Pembroke Pines as to the problems that they are going to have with the effluent that comes out of the stacks, that has all the heavy metals and everything else. But what it's going to do to us, and those that have horses and cattle, sheep, goats, is the same thing that happened last time over in Sunshine Ranches, where horses died, and the cattle were banned from being sold. And they had to kill the cattle, because they couldn't be sold, they were a product. That was being sold up in Okeechobee. So, what I'm saying is the same thing I've said two and a half years ago. They are going to do everything they can, and this ILA is going to be shoved down to throats with a waste-to-energy incinerator as the main thing, and that is Broward County's setup. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Jim Lasky, followed by Dee Schroeder, followed by Gay Chapels.
Jim Lasky, Southwest Ranches. I think all of you know that we, I started off with this, attacking a doctor, who's really a nurse practitioner, that never raised the question on the potential health effects of anybody. And then she comes into our meeting, and she admitted it. In our HOA meeting. I think that was pretty stupid on her part, but she still admitted it. We need to start off by attacking every politician that supports this idea without rational thought processes. It's kind of simple to understand, if you add up the pluses and the minuses in a cost-benefit analysis, I'm sure the answer will be very simple to understand. And I've always fought, or was of the belief, that this is required for any kind of federal funding. And I'm sure, why wouldn't it be required for state funding, when you're asking for money? I know a lot of things are done by, just go do it. And we're still living in that world nowadays, with the money that's out on the balance sheets of the government. But I don't think it's that hard to defeat, if you really look into the science of it, and the effects all around the world, not just here. Because a lot of people got a lot more plastic and problems, they come in the water because of the natural current flows, that you have to manage it there too. So, if you're in Indonesia and you need to build a school, and you've got a partner that knows how to turn plastic into building blocks, and that's exactly what they do in parts of the world, you've got people employed. Now, they might be doing it by hand, not by a fancy garbage truck that picks up the waste and just goes on to the next guy. But they actually are employed, they make a living, and they're proud of it. And it's all over the YouTube channels in regards to waste management and how they operate. So, once again, I think we ought to find out who the leaders of the pack are, or the leaders of the decision, and campaign against them, because they don't have our best interests at heart. And we're going to pay to get poisoned, and that is really embarrassing. So, anyway.
Thanks, Jim. Dee. Gay, you're next.
Dee Schroeder, Fifty-Five Oh-One Thoroughbred Lane. This is absolutely horrible, what they're going to do to your Everglades. That dust got to go somewhere, those fumes got to go somewhere. There's a high school out there, there's other schools out there. Those kids are going to be breathing this in. And I want to tell you something, when they come down with cancers and tumors and gross and stuff, I can testify firsthand, it's not fun. Have you guys reached out to everybody you can? Have you contacted your representatives? Have you put a call into the governor? How about to the vice-governor? Different municipalities, can you request a meeting with some of the municipalities and get together with them? No one is going to tell me that we can't stop this, nobody. You can stop anything you want. Follow the money. Somebody's doing this for money. This has been going on for a long time, it got swept under the carpet, so none of us knew about it. I didn't know about it. I remember hearing something a few years ago, and, you know, it came up, and it was like, no big deal, we're just talking about it. You know? I'm going to address one of my questions to Bob. Bob, are you still sitting on the MPO? Have they discussed it there?
Not at the MPO, not.
Metropolitan planning. They're supposed to be discussing all of this.
Highways, although, they don't discuss.
Just highways? Who came up with this idea? And why? Why out there? Why would you take and border your Everglades? So much for your wells. They're going to condemn them. You're going to have to go to City Water, you're going to have to pay big money. Get ready to take all your animals in for different diseases that they're going to incur. And how about your kids? How about our kids? Breathing, drinking, showering, even showering? This'll get into your pores. This is not a joke, this is a serious, serious matter, and it's got to stop. I mean, you've got to reach out to everybody. I don't care if it's Pembroke Pines, or Cooper City, or Miramar, or Davie, or whoever. There's a list. We have thirty-two municipalities in Broward County. And I was told twenty-four signed on to this. I want twenty-four names. I want to know who sold me out, and doesn't think this is a big deal. Because I'll tell you what, we need to pay for their education to put them back in school. You've got to be a moron to take and mess with the Everglades. Without that, we have nothing out here. We're all going to have to go. It's going to affect everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord. He knew I was here. Okay. Everybody was worried about the, the business development out there on twenty-seven. I mean, you're nitpicking at little stuff, and now they're going to put this burn thing out there. And has anybody found out whether or not it's going to be for contaminated waste? Because they've got a major problem, I've been following it in Dade County, and here, getting rid of it. But they need a burn. And that means that they'll be bringing, if it will be for waste, contaminated waste, they'll be bringing it from Dade County and Broward. And there's billions of dollars involved in that. The guy was giving the stats that I was watching, and I thought, oh, my god. And the funny part was, he said, "They're asking the residents to pay for this in Broward County." And I'm sitting there thinking, oh, are they going to give me a refund when they make their billions? No! We're going to pay for it with a tax, and then they're going to reap the harvest, Broward County and whatever. You can stop this. I'm eighty-six, I'm running out of steam, people. But I had to come here tonight, because nobody can shove this kind of stuff down your throat unless you let them. You can go to the state, and if the state won't listen to you, go to the federal government. And I want to make a plea to Ronnie Bergeron right now, who sits on South Florida Water Management Board. Ronnie, please, help us stop this. It's going to affect the Everglades as well. And he's on that board to protect the water. And nobody thinks about this. Yo, people, we're going to run out of water. We've got a lot more people coming into the state of Florida. Twenty-five-hundred families a day are moving here to Florida. And South Florida's loaded. And if you don't believe it, try to buy a house. You can't. And you're trying to build apartments to try to put the people in them. Well, they all want water, everybody wants water, and we're running out of water. And if you don't think water is valuable, start looking towards California and the Colorado River. It's affecting four states. They're getting out of water. And when they do, you have abandoned cities. And people die without water. So, everything is connected to something else. Now, I'm eighty-six, so I'm not going to be around here when you guys run out of water, hopefully. But my grandkids are, my kids are, and I feel for them. So, I hope that you will call a meeting of every community in Broward County, and ask them to show up at a big, I don't care if you do it at Joe Robbie Stadium. Have them show up and say, "We need to stop this. We need to protect our people, and our land, our air, and our water, and our environment." Period. Find a better way, find a different way to get rid of your waste. Thanks.
Thank you. Final two speakers, Mary Ann Allen, followed by Richard Ramcharchar.
Good evening, Mary Ann Allen, One Two Seven Zero One Mustang Trail, Sunshine Ranches, member of the Incinerator Task Force. Well, we were at the meeting with the Broward Solid Waste Working Group on the nineteenth. And we gave them hell, okay, just to let you know. It was very interesting, because the first part of the meeting was all slapping each other on the back. Man, we did a good job, we're ready to work, to move forward now, right? And as they were talking, Debbie Green spoke up for us and said, "Do you think you might let us know in a little more timely fashion regarding the work group meetings?" We got told at the last hour, the day before, whereas other groups were told a week prior, which basically, we had to scramble to get ready for that meeting. And it was very important, every meeting in front of Broward County is important to get our voices out there. So for me, it was a miracle, I got everything said in under two minutes, and I got a lot said. I told them about how incineration is the exact opposite of zero waste. I gave them all the current EPA data regarding the emissions that come out of these incinerators. And the most important point was that incinerators release five times more mercury in the air than a coal-burning plant. This affects our Mikasuki brethren, our neighbors, the most, because they live in the Everglades, right where they're going to put this plant. They eat what is called the alligator gar fish, that's their main diet. And this is where mercury goes, into the fatty tissues of the fish. This is going to be disastrous for them, because it affects the children, their mental development, their body development, and it will cause them the greatest harm. Fortunately, Richard from Broward Clean Air contacted the Mikasuki. And I ended up my speech by saying a very important Native American saying that was told to Congress. "When the last tree has died, when the last stream has been poisoned, when the last fish has been caught, only then will you realize you cannot eat money." And guess who spoke after me? The head council of the Mikasuki. Whoa, were they a little surprised at Broward County, when those people showed up? And they were not contacted, neither were the Seminole. I don't know if any kind of study was done on the impact to these people. And we have persecuted these indigenous people for hundreds of years, and this is another horrendous act upon these people. So, I know a lot of people spoke here, they don't realize that our town gave the best resolution about a week or so ago, where you said to Broward County, "We will fight you. We will not allow any incineration on our doorstep." Thank you for that.
Good evening. I'd like to share with you something about the United Nations. They passed a resolution concerning zero-waste initiatives. And zero-waste initiatives can contribute to the advancement of the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. And according to the United Nations Environment Program, if food loss and waste was a country, it would be the third biggest source of greenhouse gases, greenhouse gas emissions. So this presents a tremendous opportunity for us to address climate change through zero-waste initiatives. If you heard the news today, all the talk was about climate change, even the president spoke about it. So this is a very serious issue. We don't need incinerators to create more emissions, which will contribute to global warming and climate change extremes. Not only that, if incinerators come in to play here at the Broward County landfill, our wetlands are going to be devastated, the Everglades will be devastated with contamination. And the Mikasuki tribe, which Mary Ann mentioned, their lives will be devastated too, because they live there, and they also fish there. So, this is a very big and important issue. The fact that Broward County did not contact the Mikasuki tribe, nor the Seminole tribe, is a travesty, because those people will be affected tremendously. The inter, the intergovernmental panel on climate change reported that the, "We need to rapidly reduce emissions in order to stave off the devastating effects of 1.5 degrees Celsius in climate change." We're at 1.1, I think. And the requisite finance that is budgeted annually via Senate Bill 1764, municipal solid waste, waste-to-energy, those funds need to be diverted towards achieving zero-waste hierarchy and not incineration. I spoke to State Representative Robin Bartleman, and she's on board with supporting us against waste-to-energy. And I've asked her to reach across the aisle and speak to her colleagues to defund annual appropriations for waste-to-energy programs. So this is something that we need to look at, and hopefully, this can be done to move in a different direction, which is zero waste. I mean, if we don't do this, then we're going to destroy everything that we have out here, including the water, which was spoken about. The zero-waste hierarchy starts with rethinking and redesigning, reducing, recycling, compost, materials recovery, residuals management. materials recovery, residuals management, biological treatment, and stabilized landfilling. And what's most unacceptable at the bottom of the hierarchy is incineration and Waste to Energy. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, that's it. No further speakers.
Thank you. Board report.
Debbie, Debbie Green, I was just going to speak in regards to the tax force that we're creating for the town and all of our neighboring cities. Anybody who's, who wants to be part of this, to please, I need to create an email. I, I just want to, and everything that happened, every, all the comments that have been made today, I just want to, all of these were all shared at this meeting. This was the first, first meeting of the group. We're planning to meet at least once a month. And then I guess, just so we can make sure that things aren't getting past us and it doesn't get ahead of us. And then if things happen and deems we need to meet more often, at that time, we'll do that. I just want to thank Russell and Andy, they've been tremendous in, in partnering and the communication back and forth and, and really helping to make tonight happen and, you know, having, inviting Tom Good to join our meeting, who's been so involved with this, the working group that's been going on and now passing it on. So at the next town council meeting, I will have an email that I can share and just so that everyone, if you have an interest in fighting this, I think, which we all do, this is not, it's not good for any of the county. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Is that all? Yes? Okay. Move on to council member.
Hello.
Mr. Gary, welcome back.
Thank you. Big surprise.
Yes.
Just want to make mention, while we have a lot of people from out west, out here, the landfill, I don't believe, is the site that they're talking about for incineration. There's a 40 acre plot next to Bergeron's Park of Commerce, right on Sheridan, that's owned by Broward County, Free and Clear. And I believe that would be the shovel-ready area that they're talking about. So I'd just like to pass that information on. That was given to us by a ex-commissioner who sat on the board two years ago. So just keep that in mind. I don't think they're talking about the landfill. I think they're talking about the 40 acres. Right now, I believe it houses horses that have a particular disease, Coggins disease. So just keep that in mind, that that's one of the possible sites. And I believe that's why they're pushing so hard for that area, because they already own the property.
And they've got a landfill right next to it.
And they got a landfill right next to it. So just keep that in the back of your mind. And that's some additional information. So, just a whole bunch of information I want to give out right now. Most of this is boring, but essential if, if it pertains to you. Hazmat at the Barn is this Saturday, 7:29. It's from 8 to 2 with shredding starting at 10. We have free shredding, prescription drug drop-off, and it's a great service and it's at the barn. And you never have to get out of your car, you just have to show your driver's license that you're a resident of Southwest Ranches. Our new speed pole is up on 186th Avenue, working well. It's a test case. It's up and running and it works very, very well. I've gone up and down the street a few times, a little over the speed limit, a little under. And it was, some people were criticizing the location of it. What they didn't understand was the available right-of-way to where we could put it happened to be right there. And since it was a test case, it seemed to be like the most suitable area. Just FYI, Town Hall's going to be closed on the 4th of September for Labor Day. We do have a photo contest currently going on right now for the, next year's calendar, Beauty and the Ranches. The submissions need to be by 9:15. Contact Susan or at the front desk, you know, for the newsletter. The Waste Management Contract, Contact, sorry, is on the website, under Garbage and Recycling. If you, and it goes directly to Barbara Herrera. We had an incident last week with Mist Recycling in Rolling Oaks. And she set this up as a temporary measure so that nobody's stuck on hold forever. And you make the call, I checked that it works. Call goes right to her desk and she reacts to it immediately. That's what, that's what she indicated to me. The Incinerator Task Force met earlier today. We've heard a lot about that already. We have Bingo at the Barn for the Parks Board, Parks Foundation, excuse me, on 8:26. Tickets are $25. Call December for admission and dinner is included. Is that correct? Thank you, December. It's from 6:00 to 7:00 PM is dinnertime. Bingo is from 7:00 to 9:00. And it's always a lot of fun and everybody enjoys it. We have a budget workshop Tuesday, not Thursday, Tuesday, 8:15 at 7:00 PM. So that'll be our first budget workshop. So make, everybody make a note of it. The Flowmobile has been canceled for the month of August. Do not have a reason why, it's just been canceled. Hopefully it'll be reactivated by September. The Town Council, August meetings are on the 10th and the 24th. And on 8/1, the first day of August, here in the parking lot, we're going to have the Davie Police with the National Night Out for Crime Prevention at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. They'll be here with all the equipment they have and doing demonstrations. And I urge everybody to come out and show your support for our police department. And I'll close with, Town Hall's has new summer hours, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 to 5:30. And then, excuse me, Monday through Thursday, from 8:00 to 5:30. And Friday, 8:00 to 4:00. So, and Vice Mayor, that's all I have. I'm out of gas.
Yes. Bob?
Can you turn the mic on?
There you go.
So I do want to respond to a couple of the comments that were made regarding the, the incinerator and, and the impacts. So Dee, that meeting was three years ago when Beam Fur came in and said, this is all about recycling. We're going to be recycling all your garbage. That's about the time the bottom was dropping out of the recycling market, when China stopped buying it from the world and recycled glass went from so much per ton to pennies per ton, the same thing with paper and all the rest. So when they showed up here back about, hmm, month and a half, two months ago, what happened to the recycling project? Because we had already gotten some feedback in that they were planning incinerators and all sorts of things, but nothing is on paper. They don't want to put anything on paper because once it's on paper, they're, they're accountable for it. So that, that started about three years ago. And they should have spent three years looking at all the options, not coming up with a way to come up with an interlocal agreement. Three years to develop an interlocal agreement is pitiful. I mean, that's something they should have cranked out in a year. And we should be down, if they're going to spend billions, these facilities, if you start doing the research like a lot of people have, these facilities aren't like they were 30 years ago when they built Wheelabrider. That was about a quarter of a billion dollars. Now they're over a billion. And part of that is because they're, they've come up with a lot of ways to take these nasty things out of the air. Palm Beach is apparently excelling at this, pulling out all the nasties. But what do you do with it? What do you do with all that mercury? Do you sell it back to the industry? It's not in a usable form. What do you do with all of the sulfur dioxide that's put in the air? That they're actually able to take some of that out by treating it? They put it in the landfill, okay? There's no zero waste concept, anything to do with a landfill. Richard was talking earlier and he's talked previously about living over near the Wheelabrider plant. We didn't know it, we were neighbors. He was on one side of the golf course and I was on the other. You were off a Griffin, I was off a Sterling. And, you know, he was bringing up the fact that they were impacted. We were a little further away, but I was telling somebody tonight, when we would go out, and we're talking almost 30 years ago, we would go out, get in our cars, and they had a fine grime over them, if the wind was coming from the direction of the Wheelabrider plant. If you don't know where it is, you can't miss it. It's on the east side of 441. You cannot miss it from 595. It's a 200-foot pile of ash that covers almost 60 acres. And the facility's in there, I learned about it the hard way. A friend of mine and I were doing mist approaches on instrument landings into Fort Lauderdale. And we hit the plume coming out of one of those facilities that, it's over 2,000 degrees. Made our airplane go like that in a heartbeat and we were only 300 feet up. That's when I learned that, what those plants were and how big the facility is there. So the next time you go into Fort Lauderdale, take a look on your way back. I got to get pictures and get them in the town newsletter, because it's amazing how much ash, this is ash, it's not garbage, like over here on 27. This is just the ash out of the incinerators. Either the stuff they collect out of the stacks, or the stuff they clean out of the bottom of the incinerators once they, they get to a certain point. So this, this is all bad news. I think Mr. Brubeck was talking about the two schools. He was talking about Franklin Academy and Somerset Academy. I, I wrote an article last week for DRW, so some of these facts are already in there. But do you know, in a 10-mile circle from the dump out, there are 20 elementary schools, 10 middle schools, and 10 high schools. And I'm not talking parochial schools, these are all the public schools that the county owns, okay? What happens to the ballfields? What happens to the schoolyards? What happens to all the places the kids play if it's constantly getting toxic materials? We, we talk about toxic. If you do a Google search, just put in the word incinerator and put in waste gases, there's about 50 toxic gases that are produced by them. And some of them like mercury. We all know about mercury. We've been dealing with mercury, the fish are contaminated in the Everglades. I gave up on bass fishing because you can't eat them anymore. Yeah, I wouldn't even eat a deer from out there anymore, because same problems, they're, they're full of mercury. Mercury also does some pretty nasty things to livestock. I was reading that it creates genetic problems in livestock. So if you start having mutations in the goats in town, the sheep in town, the, the horses in town, this is the outcome of dumping all this toxic material within a stone's throw. Somebody mentioned the wind? Okay, so another area of research. Every now and then, these various incinerator facilities by law have to put some radioactive materials, like they do for tracing in our blood, all sorts of things. The waste gases from the two incinerators, north and south of us here, go up through the Mississippi Valley, okay? Draw a line from southeast Florida in the northwest direction and that's where all the smoke goes. We will be contaminating the farmlands in mid-America, we will be contaminating the east side of the Rocky Mountains, because that's where the wind's going. Now, folks, I've, I've said this a couple of times and I probably will say it until they finally say, we're not going to do it. But this cannot be a not-in-my-backyard argument, okay? Because Senate's a Southwest Ranches problem. Listen to those people, they're doing nothing but complaining. No, 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 no. This is a not-in-Broward County solution. This is a not-in-Florida solution. This is not practical anymore. You know, when, when our parents were kids, incinerators were commonly used. I grew up about a mile and a half from one in my hometown. They ended up bulldozing it when I was a kid, because they realized how toxic it was. And the waste ash was filling up the dump, the place that we were all supposed to go to drop off, you know, yard waste and things like that. So I, I haven't found anything good yet. We are reaching out to the neighboring cities. The mayor has had meetings, I believe, with, I'm not going to say who. I only know who he has, and I think the mayor of Davie's out on vacation, so Steve will get together with her. And I'm not sure with the status of Pembroke Pines, although we met with Tom Good today and I know Tom came over yesterday and met with our administration somewhat to say, how can I help? So we are reaching out. Now, I do like the idea of finding out who's supporting this, who thinks it's a great idea, and going after each and every one of them, one-on-one, 10-on-one, 50-on-one, to show them that this is, if you can get 1,000 friends out, Jim, we'll bring them. So, all right, let's talk about medical waste real quick. There's medical waste being burned all over Broward County, believe it or not. It's a licensed business. Whether it's good or bad, I think it might actually be better than some of the things they throw in to the incinerators, because I heard, I heard the term being used, that's, you know, this stuff is going to be contaminated. All waste is contaminated. If, if you throw a two-by-four in there, that's PT. You just dropped in arsenic, what is it, the three chemicals? Arsenic, chromium, what's the third thing in PT? Copper, thank you. So when you burn that stuff, what happens? It all goes in the air, all right? Today, you burn it in your backyard, it's going up in the air. There's no way to get some of those things out. I like the idea of us escalating this to the state. Debbie Wasserman Schultz had a representative here today. Who's the other?
Mike Gottlieb.
Mike Gottlieb had a representative here today. We're, we're getting their ear. They, they realize how important. Going to the federal, now, there's another problem with the state. Tallahassee is in cahoots with this whole thing. If they were really for recycling, they probably would not have set up a situation where, if we built an incinerator in Broward County and it's used for Waste to Energy, 50% of the garbage that goes in there is considered recycling, because they're generating energy. This is part of the recycling plan. Let's burn it, half of it, then you can count it. Bad idea. So we, we need to try to get that changed in Tallahassee, if at all possible, or just take it off the books, no more. I'm not sure where to go with the Fed. The EPA has pretty much been emasculated over the last couple of years. If anybody has any ideas in the federal government, where to reach out, let us know. Now, I need to make an appeal, particularly to the people at home on YouTube, or obviously, if, if you're here and you know anybody. One of the key things, I've been talking to people at work, I'm talking to everybody I can about this to try to get ideas, and I love the fact that there were a lot of good ideas here tonight. But how do we organize all this? And, and we've got some people that are organizing. But then how do we organize our thoughts and how do we reach out? And I'm not a PR person, I'm an IT guy. I'm a geek, self-admitted geek. We need somebody to volunteer their time, who is a public relations professional. We could use their help for a few months to get this kick-started, because there's a lot of organizations, and we heard them tonight, schools, PTAs, we've got HOAs, not only ours, but most of the cities around us have either HOAs or civic associations or condo associations. There's tons of clubs in Broward. Last night, I wrote a, a letter to the new chair of the Sierra Club, trying to enlist their support. I've already reached out to the president of the Audubon Society, who is a good friend of mine, and they're going to support us. Friends of the Everglades, I don't know anybody there. I know we've had, Jim, do you know anybody at Friends of the Everglades?
A lot of those groups, I'm not sure who's who, but they all know who each other is.
Yeah.
So the one guy that I already recommended was a guy who's an excellent videophotographer. He also knows how to talk and he should start using.
All right. Hey, Jim, I, I didn't mean to start to, thank you. I thought you might have known somebody in Friends of the Everglades, you're always airboating out there. But we'll find somebody. We're not supposed to do Q and A, I'm sorry. Just moving on.
Susan knows Friends of the Everglades.
Okay.
There's an email that I already emailed twice from Friends of the Everglades.
If you get an email, I will write the letter. Perfect. But we, we need as much help as we can get here. Dee's right, I think we can stop this. I mean, this is an ugly scar that Broward County is looking to, an ugly wound Broward County is looking to open up on itself. I don't see a reason. The people in Coconut Creek are already against any of this, because they've been suffering from Monarch Hill for 35 years, since that place was built. The cities around it, Pompano, they don't want an incinerator, additional incinerators in their vicinity. So I think there's willing participants out there. And then just your average citizen, when you start talking about the things that you all brought up, not even the things we're talking about up here concerning an incinerator, people will start getting very concerned. Now, we're not out there trying to scare everybody, it's the facts. You know, there, I've heard a lot of things that are, I'm not, I'm not clear how true they are, but they have a lot of fright factor. If we hit them with the facts, nobody can go back and say, those people in Southwest Ranches don't know what they're talking about. We do. And we're assume, we're, we're putting together people that do know. The last thing I wanted to bring up on this topic is, the town has also, we, we asked Andy and Russell to put a page on the town website with any information we can collect. There's meeting minutes out there from this working group, there's all sorts of things. I started at the top and I made it about four lines down, since it's been put up there. But if you're interested in coming up to speed on this, getting educated about it... But if you're interested in coming up to speed on this, getting educated about it, we're we're trying to put everything we're learning. If you wanna learn about the technology, the American Society of Mechanical Engineers, they're the ones who designed these, uh, these, um, incinerators all over the United States. It's it's the association for that, uh, that organization. And if you wanna find out how to 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 build a, an incinerator and also all the pitfalls, it's all out on their website. It's pretty interesting stuff. So we'll, we'll keep moving forward on this. We've all been writing articles in the town newsletter about this. I just put one into Davie and the Ranches. I think David, you had one last month in Davie and the Ranches as well. The nice thing about our town newsletter is I found out when I was campaigning last, a lot of people read it. Oh, you're Bob, I read your stuff every month. Fantastic. So it's a good communications mechanism for us to use to get the word out. But Davie and the Ranches is Davie, Weston, Southwest Ranches, there's some people in Pines, it's a broader audience. So if their councils and commissions are not talking about it, we are in a newspaper that those folks read. Last comments, um, Gary touched on it, but I wanted to bring up, we're in budget season again, and, you know, we're in negotiations with Davie right now on the police contract, I I should say public safety, it's it's police and fire. Uh, those contracts go up every year, so our fire fee probably will go up proportionately. Um, we're, we're working through all that now. We, the budget book is out. Andy, we make copies for residents if they want a copy of the budget book, right?
We do.
We do.
We do. We have, it's available in Town Hall.
Okay, is it, uh, is it online? Is it, can you download?
If it's not yet, it will be. I'm not sure what the timing is. Yes?
Yeah.
They'll say yes, it is.
It is, okay. So if you want a hard copy, like sometimes I do, the budget book is important because I'm always flipping back and forth, you can get a hard copy or you can download it shortly or it's on the website according to Russell, so maybe I I haven't found it, but that doesn't mean... All right, so then moving on, we have the first public hearing for, oh, excuse me, on August the 15th, we have our budget workshop. And that's the best place to come and give us your feedback on, uh, the budget after you've had some time to read through it. Uh, we're, we're here to answer questions. We, we certainly want to take resident input in the decisions we make on the budget. So the workshop is the place where it's all laid bare. After that, uh, so that's on August 15th. On September the 14th, we'll have our first public hearing for the tentative millage and budget adoption. And we do some discussion, it's really fine-tuning at that point. And then the final hearing for millage and budget adoption is on Thursday, the 28th, and that's the night that we actually adopt it with a resolution, and then it goes on to the, uh, to the property appraiser's office. So that's all I have. Um, be happy to talk to any of you after the meeting about any of these topics. Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. David?
Yep. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, and thanks to those that appear, uh, appeared at the, uh, meeting before this. Uh, Dee, you mentioned one little thing, follow the money, really important. If you, uh, go to, uh, Florida Legislative, uh, Florida Senate website, look up CESSB 1764, passed last year, uh, municipal solid waste to energy program, passed by the Florida Legislature. This item, um, provides for $100 million of recurring state money to go to these programs, plus $160,000 for administration. That's chasing the money. Now, this legis, this legislation was, uh, very much, um, approved by, uh, almost, almost a whole legislature, signed into law by the governor on June 20th, 2022. And when Bob mentioned that, um, Tallahassee's in coot's with those, with these folks, I very much believe it. Um, that's where chasing the money's going, and it's there. You know, um, Southwest Ranches, one of the issues that I found, that I wrote about and that I find my issue on this has to do with water, groundwater, surface water. Surface water, our surf, Southwest Ranches is the largest municipality with aquifer recharge. And when that wa, rainwater comes from Pembroke Pines, it heads toward us to the Sea 11. Now, when, if that ashes is contaminated with this, that contaminates our canals, it's gonna get into our animals, and we're gonna be reliving Vista View all over again. And, um, you know, uh, there was folks that had cancer from that. Chris Brownlow had to put down five horses because of that. That's nothing that we can put up with again. Uh, now, uh, going over the, um, proposed budget, I had, um, spoken with Andy about something, um, it wasn't, not too long ago, there was a fire in Sunshine Ranches on construction property. Uh, and, um, now, when we do our fire fee assessment, we're basically, we have commercial property has a fee, vacant land has a, a very minimal fee, residential has a fee. Now, when somebody applies for a work permit, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, if, um, if somebody's applying for a work permit on vacant land, they are still paying the vacant land fire fee, am I right?
Until the CO is issued, it would be taxed as vacant land, yes.
Cool, all right.
And assessed as vacant land.
And, and I'm, I'm thinking about this, that some of these construction projects with the construction equipment and the structures that are unfinished, that's producing an additional risk for fire. And I think that, um, prospectively, not, not retroactively, but prospectively, it should be something I would like to look into, see if it's feasible, where we can create an additional category where there's a vacant land, where there is construction being built for a residence, and they would have a fire fee to where they would be sharing the burden with all of us. And, and that's something I would like to see if that's feasible with the budget. Just a vacant land where there is a building permit issued for construction, not something, not a rebuilding of a house or something like, they, they already have their fee. This is just for vacant land. So, um, that's what I have for this week, so I'll turn it over to you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, David. I wanna say thank you to everybody for showing up. I wanna say thank you to the residents group and to the, uh, Clean Air Group for showing up this evening, had a great meeting in there. I wanna say thank you, I saw he was here, to Tom Good from Pembroke Pines. Thank you to the residents from Pines for showing up and joining with Southwest Ranches to fight this. Uh, Councilman Hartman said that this is not a in-my-backyard issue, it's for the entire county, and I do agree. I do wanna clarify something, uh, Ms. Schroeder, you said that you need to get after all 24 cities that signed the LA, ILA. The reason we signed that ILA was not saying that we endorse this whatsoever, it was to give us a seat at the table so we can argue against it. Without that seat at the table, we would have absolutely no say. And our representative, our mayor, I think he will fight his butt off to keep us from having that incinerator. I did learn, oh, a month or so ago at one of the HOA meetings, and this may surprise you, but they're looking to build four, three to four incinerators in the next 30 years here. So if we can stop this first one, then we have a real shot at the rest. But if we don't stop this first one, you'll see three or four built in the next 30 years. This is, this is in the planning stage, this is what's going on. So we have to get together, thank you for the groups, to get together and fight as a group, not as a single town, but with everybody else, Weston, Pines, Cooper City, all of them close by that we can get with. And lastly, I would encourage you to please email me. It's jimallbritton@southwestranches.org if you want one of the speed trailers in your neighborhood to slow the traffic down, and it'll be there for two weeks, email me. Or call Tom, uh, Tom at Town Hall. Tom, make sure, there he is in the back, uh, he's the one that delivers them, sets them up. If they are set up not facing the right way and you don't particularly care for it, I will tell you, you can pull a pin and spin it around. Is that right, Tom? That's all right. You don't have to move it, you don't have to do anything, uh, just spin it around. And with that, I wanna say thank you to everybody for coming out, all right? And we'll get into the agenda. Thank you. Mr. Polykov, legal comments?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll, I'll just be real quick, uh, just wanna respond to one thing that Mr. Brubeck said, welcome to Southwest Ranches. You mentioned the gates out west, I think 207th. The town of Southwest Ranches at one of its, uh, recent meetings sent Pines an offer to, uh, allow those gates to remain shut during school drop-off and pickup hours to try to prevent, uh, impacts to your community. Pines rejected that offer, and instead, I'm sure you know, those gates have been completely removed, so they don't even exist anymore. But I just wanna mention that before they removed them, we did make that offer. Other than that, no further legal comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Our council, they tell us all that, and that's what I, thank you for that.
Thank you, Keith. Andy?
Yeah, just two things. Uh, Councilmember Hartman spoke before about the webpage that was created for what, for residents who are interested in that, if they go to our website and look for solid waste and recycling, that information, that section, there is a link that will take you to anything and everything we've come up with on this, on this topic, including a link to, hey, Russell's going to it now. Including a link to the Broward League of Cities because they had a lot of information prior to us. So if you'll look, you'll see at the top, the very first link when Russell calls it up.
That was on the homepage.
So there it is, Solid Waste Authority Updates, and so if you click on that...
Maybe we can make that like 40-point type?
See, the, the very first line, they're Broward League of Cities information, so everything that they have had over time, including minutes of meetings and other things, it's all there, okay? So we've got that out there as a resource for you all, okay? Yeah, second thing I wanted to share with you is, uh, I wanna show you what the, what this room looked like just this morning. Russell can call up that photo. So that was council chambers just this morning. I just wanna let you know that, that staff went through a very extensive hurricane tabletop exercise as part of our preparation for the year. So the, the staff was in here going through, it was, uh, led by Rod Ley from Public Works. I know Emily had a lot of input in that as well, so Public Works staff did a great job. Uh, staff was in here for about two hours, two and a half hours, working through almost anything and everything that could possibly happen as part of our preparation. We've had some people who have been here for a few years, have been through storms. We've got some new people as well. So I just wanna let you know, give you some confidence that, that staff actively prepares for these things and gets, and gets ready for those events. I just wanna share just, just this morning what that room looked like when we were in here doing this. So that's all I have, Vice Mayor, thank you.
All right, we'll get into the, uh, resolutions, and, uh...
I got it.
If I could, I'd like to ask if Andy would, uh, introduce eight, nine, and 10, if he'd be so kind as to do that?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Wel, welcome the opportunity to speak to those. As part of our budget process, uh, tonight is a very step, a very important step in that process. So in order for us to be trim compliant, which is truth and millage, for the property appraiser to get their, their anticipated or potential tax information out to residents, this is something that we need to do tonight. This is more of a housekeeping issue rather than a true budget hearing, although I, I will say that Emile does have a, a presentation that he's, he's gonna go through for you. Uh, the important thing to note tonight is you, you, you're not making final decisions on any budget item, on any millage, on any fire assessment. What we're doing, and this is the most important thing for, to remind the council and for residents to know, what you're doing tonight is setting the ceiling. So we're gonna ask you to set a preliminary millage rate, a fire assessment, and a solid waste assessment. Nothing can go up from that number. Things can only go down as we go through the budget process, have the budget workshops, the, the hearings, and, and talk a little bit further. So all we're asking you to do is, is set those ceilings, and we'll go from there. And I, before I turn it over to Emile for his presentation, uh, I wanna say a special thank you to, to he and the finance staff. They have been here nights, they have been here weekends, they've put an incredible amount of time. They got all kinds of input from, from the staff, from department directors, from, from the mayor and the council, from our advisory boards, uh, from the public, and, and they've massaged that and consolidated that into, uh, the numbers you're gonna see tonight and, uh, to lead us towards that next step in the process in, in August for our, our budget workshop. So, uh, Emile, I'll turn it over to you for your presentation.
Before Emile goes, uh, Mr. Manager, if, we're gonna read all three into the record of, of the resolutions, and then because his presentation covers most of them.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be fine, thank you. Russell?
Okay, Vice Mayor, thank you. Uh, the first one is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, setting the proposed millage rate and current rollback rate pursuant to Section 200.065 Florida statutes and establishing the date, time, and place at which public hearings will be held to consider the proposed millage rate and the tentative budget for fiscal year 2024. Directing the town clerk to file said resolution with the property appraiser of Broward County pursuant to the requirements of Florida statutes and the rules and regulations of the Department of Revenue for the state of Florida, directing that a certified copy of this resolution be sent to the Broward County property appraiser and tax collector and providing an effective date. Item number nine is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing findings, amending in part Section 3 of Resolution 2011-084 by providing a new definition incorporating the 2023 Fire Assessment Report, approving preliminary fire protection assessment rates relating to the provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida for fiscal year 2023 through 2024, providing for the imposition and computation of fire protection assessments, providing for an exemption for veterans with service-connected total and permanent disability, providing for legislative determinations of special benefit and fair apportionment, establishing, establishing the preliminary rates of assessment, directing the preparation of a preliminary assessment role, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of mailed and published notice thereof and providing an effective date. Item number 10 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, relating to the provision of solid waste services, facilities, and programs to residential properties in the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing authority for solid waste services assessments, providing purpose and definitions, providing findings, incorporating the solid waste special assessment methodology report, directing the preparation of an assessment role, providing for a 50% exemption for veterans service-connected total and permanent disability, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof and providing an effective date.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion, motion to approve items eight, nine, and 10.
Second, second, second.
Eight, nine, and 10. Emile, you're up.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Andy, thank you very much for that introduction and to town council. Uh, good evening to the public as well. Um, as Andy indicated, uh, this, uh, presentation or this proposed, um, budget is essentially a nahtuex, a nahtuex C, uh, rate. Uh, that includes the millage rate, the fire assessment, and the solid waste assessment. In this, um, introduction cover sheet, pretty much would, um, proposing to, uh, leaving the same millage rate as last year, which is 3.90. Uh, the initial fire assessment, uh, we do contemplate a rate change increase and a decrease. Uh, once we get to that one item, we will break down, um, the different pieces of it that has been impacted. Uh, this, the third and last, uh, resolution being brought to the council tonight is the initial solid waste assessment. Uh, for those, uh, we expect, uh, uh, an increase between $66.01 to 111.68. That range increase is essentially based on the fact that, uh, the solid waste is broken down into two pieces, which is the solid waste per residential, residential, and the bulk waste, which is associated to the square footage of the property. Um, as some of the council members had mentioned tonight, um, this is the calendar that we have for, uh, for the budget, uh, process. Tonight, we are at the preliminary millage and initial fire solid waste assessment adoption on the 27th. We do have the budget workshop on August 15 at 7:00 PM, and the first, uh, and second public hearing in September. Uh, this is the summary of what we're presenting into the three pieces tonight. Um, first, we're doing a comparison between last year's and this year. Uh, last year, um, there was a significant reduction, or a reduction depending on how you see it, from 4.25 to 3.90. And the fire assessment represented an increase, uh, from the previous year of $74.44. We need to take that into consideration, that that reduction would have significant, significantly higher, um, if it wouldn't have been for town... higher if it wouldn't have been for town council providing a subsidy for the remaining three years of about $503,000 to keep that fire assessment at a reasonable amount. We are keeping that and following the instructions of town council into this proposed 2324. And we are presenting to the public and council a decrease on the fire assessment of $5.81. That is in comparison to the previous year's rate. On the solid waste, we are expecting an average increase based on the same instructions that I provided on the lot of $79.07. This is pretty much a template to show the public and anyone who's watching and here, how do we get to the point as to the ad valorem, the property assessment? We do receive from Broward County Property Appraisers, two, the first one coming on July, on June 1st. That's where we get the preliminary taxable value of the property, and then we get the final one on July 1st. And that's basically just providing that breakdown of how do we get to that point. This gives us a historical of how the millage has moved within the last six years. This has been the lowest it's been since 2018. And again, we're keeping the same millage rate as last year. As you'd seen on the deck, on the first three columns, that's just indicating that at that point in time, town council provided a separate millage rate for transportation to T-S Door. So the question comes, how are we able to propose the same millage rate? Well, essentially, we do know that inflation was extremely high last year. I mean, it's been, it was the highest been over the last 40 years, over 9%. That has eased into this year to about 3% from last year's last reading. And we do take that into consideration, but at the same time, the fact that it is estimated by some economists that the U.S. could experience a recession into next year, we've been very fiscally responsible in trying to sustain the same levels of expenditure as well as the funding sources. And this also attributable to the fact that the taxable value has increased, providing an additional revenue to the town with the same utilization of that millage, the 3.90. And the last item is essentially saying that since the town is essentially still able to qualify and find funding for T-S Door, we're not proposing those fundings from within the millage rate. Within this proposed, we are highlighting the program modifications that are funded. After the second slide after this, we have also broken down the CIP, the capital improvement projects. We are initiating, there is a specific breakdown of each one of these projects within the proposed budget book, which we have more detail. This is pretty much as highlight of the PMs that we are proposing in this budget. This, the initial page, this one is being funded through the volunteer fire department, in volunteer fire department, and we wanted to make that distinction between the two, which is why the initial one was either millage impact or ARPA funding impact. This one is specifically directly attributed to the fire assessment. Now we begin with the capital improvement. Here we have 10 funded projects for this proposed 2324 budget. This pretty much in line with what we currently have. There's one item that's been added to it, the flashing speed limit signs. That's based on input by town council, and as such, it's part of the CIP for this year. Here are the remaining CIP projects. We have broken them down by transportation projects and ARPA projects, so the way we can identify and make sure that everyone, it's known to the public that those ARPA projects related have no millage impact whatsoever to the millage rate that was mentioned discussing the first slide. On the transportation, it's important to know that of that $1.3 million, the town, it's only going to have millage impact of at least over $200,000. That's given the fact that personnel, staff, Emily, and the group working for the town has been able to obtain grant in the amount of over $900,000 for that specific project. The same could be said for the next one, of which, of the $750,000, only $150,000 is being impacted by the millage. This is a quick summary of the millage rate, essentially. We are recommending to maintain the same rate, millage rate as last year, and this is a quick example of the impact of that millage associated to the residence per household. On every $500,000 of taxable value, this represents a combined $206 increase in comparison to the covering year rollback rate, not necessarily to last year rate. So let's be mindful of that. And it's also important to mention that those eligible for safe homes exemption would not see any increase in excess of 3%. And this is a breakdown of the millage. What we're proposing is the color blue for some, purple for others, is that 3.90 and how much revenue will be resulting out of it, which is that $8,234,584. The last, the second to last column represents the incremental revenue based on the increased taxable value of the property and what is required. It's only three votes required, which we are recommending a unanimous vote, given the fact this is the preliminary and not-to-exceed rate. With that said, I mean, we're going to jump into the next one. This is the initial fire assessment. The first slide is just indicating and showing the public and council what, how do we get about the fire assessment, the statutes that actually course for and that puts the town in the requirements or at least the option that we could actually proceed with this We want to reinforce the fact that some, a couple of years ago, council directed, provided us to combine the methodology to minimize the impact on the different variations that have been experienced in the past, combine it in a blending commercial, institutional, and warehouse and industrial categories. For those, we would provide a small breakdown on the following slide. The second point of reference is the number of variants that are exempted and the amount that the town would have to be impacted. This amount is actually absorbed by the general fund, so it's no impact whatsoever to the residents. And the same is applicable to the agricultural land exemption and the amount indicated to This is what we are proposing on the preliminary rate as to what the fire assessment would be for this coming year. It would come from 764.44 to 758.63. There's also another reduction on the aggregate from 126.02 to 89.12. This is for reference, while it's just, we want the public to know that it's standard of what we have experienced for the last three years, but we are using that whole distribution to make that determination on the assessment, which is why it's decreasing that volatility that the town experienced for the first four or five years prior to the adoption of this change. And just to set an example, that 5.21% on the residential rate, if we go back to 2022, the five-year rolling rate, it was 65%. So it's pretty much in line between that range, the 60, 60-some percent year over year within the residential. And this is a breakdown. On one of the slides, we provided the amount for the aggregate and also for the residential rate. Here, we included the combined blended methodology and what it changed and what the new rate is going to be. So it represents an increase of .2394 versus a decrease in the aggregate and the fire So we're going to jump right into the next slide or the next part of the presentation with the solid waste assessment. Again, we're providing and showing how we come about to be able to do the solid waste assessment. That's what the first two items reflect to. We want to reinforce the fact that last year, a contract with WN was adopted for the services indicated, and now for this year, there is going to be an increase, which was indicative on the first slide of the presentation. And that's the fact that based on contract, on contract arrangement, it requires if there's a change in the CPI, that the amount actually gets adjusted. That, per that contract agreement, is, we're estimating the amount to go from 2.947 from last year to 3.11. That's an increase of $165,900, I mean, $593. Again, here, we want to mention who has been exempted, in this case, only 50%, and what the impact to the town and the general fund. In this case, it's for this year's approximately about $9,000. And it's also, I mean, we have already said it on multiple occasions, that this is required for us to be able to comply with the BCPA requirement for us to be included on the notifications, the three notifications that are going out on August 24th. We need to have this information ready by August 4th. This is that breakdown in more detail as to what that average is made of. I indicated on some of the slides that the average increase is 79.07. Then we can identify within each one of those parcel assessments letters that we fall into to make the determination how much our assessment is going to be. And with that, we conclude our presentation with our recommendation for town council to adopt the resolution as presented tonight for setting the rate maximums not to exceed as indicated earlier.
Thank you, Emile, great presentation. Open it for public comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any member of the public speak on all of the items at once?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. When we first did the contract for the solid waste and for fire, I objected to airtight percentage increases, and now they're coming out to bite us. I didn't mind having cost of living plus inflation, but with a maximum per year. But we're going to see 6%, 8%, 10% every year on both of these contracts over time. Some information for you. We are the number 14th richest municipality in the state of Florida. For the last year, our values went up 4.5. Over a five-year period, we have gone up 91.7% in the valuation of our properties. And that's by the federal government. This is a very large amount in the five years. What we're seeing is the cost, if the millage rate stays the same, where we're going to have very significant increases on each one of our properties. I would like for this council to take a machete to this budget. There are a lot of things that don't need to be in there, as far as I'm concerned. And we also see little tiny puddles of money in a lot of these budgets for each department. They put a buffer in. So that's, and saying that our financial group has spent weekends and nights and everything else working very hard on this budget, when they just said that this budget would be so much easier with the program that we gave them a couple of months ago and put into effect. You can't have both. So who are they cutting? Again, I ask you the same question. Who's leaving financed? Is it going to be the program or a person? Because if they're still doing nights and weekends and everything else and getting bloody knuckles, why did we get them this program that makes it so much easier for them? Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Council comment?
Just a question.
Mike? Thank you.
Much better. The software that we procured, what, about four months ago? One month ago? Okay, so that is not implemented. The team hasn't been trained. It takes six months to implement that, or what's your estimate? I don't recall, based on what you told us a few months ago.
We still project to have it completed by the end of this fiscal year, but it has not. We're in the first phase, second phase of the process.
Okay, so we're still doing it the old way with Excel spreadsheets?
Correct.
Thank you.
I got one.
Yes.
This one, this one has always perplexed me. If you go back to the second to the last page, proposed solid waste rates, line C and line D. Line D is larger than line C, but it's less by about a dollar. And I've never figured that out. This is like third year in a row like that's happened. And I've never quite understood why. It's not very, it's not very much money, I just don't get the reason why.
That's unit.
I won't be able to explain that as to the reason for. It's the way we break down the square foot, the square foot a lot.
Yeah, I understand. It just seems funny to me when I look at it, the larger property costs a dollar less on the bulk than the smaller property. That's all, it's just a question.
Any other questions? Yes.
Just one. One of your charts here has rollback on it multiple times. I'm not sure if most people understand what rollback rates are. Maybe you could spend 30 seconds just highlighting that.
Absolutely. It's essentially if town council does not take any actions during the budget process, no decision has been made through by October 1st, then by, it is required, then the town takes over the rollback rate, which essentially would impact the revenue being projected, and the budget has to be readjusted, given the fact that there's a reduction in the revenue collected due to that reduction in rate.
Good, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Counsel? No?
Call a question.
Yes, call a question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 11 in Vice Mayor's, a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting honorarily designating the portion of state Ranches, Florida, supporting honorarily designating the portion of State Road 823, South Flamingo Road, between Southwest 52nd Street and Southwest 55th Street in Broward County, as Archbishop Edward A. McCarthy High School Way, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment?
Yeah.
No public comment? Town Council? Comment? No? They've been good neighbors for us. They really, truly have, yeah. I think this would be a nice thing for them. Call a question?
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Item number 12. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, entering into a revocable license agreement with Broward County attached here to as Exhibit A, and incorporated herein by reference to allow the placement of a license plate reader within county-owned right-of-way along Griffin Road, and authorizing the proper town officials to execute, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, second. Public comment? Seeing none. Counsel comment?
Yeah, just a quick question. Russell, is this the last camera going up?
This is the last location that will include actually two cameras, so there'll be one on the south side of Griffin Road and one on the north side, in the, kind of in the county right-of-way that's on the north side of Griffin Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And how many does that make, Russell?
There'll be, we'll have, when this is completed, we'll have 15 locations with 29 cameras in total, interspersed throughout town.
So we should be well protected.
I believe so, but we can always do more.
Yeah.
Here, here.
Any other comments? Call a question?
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, officially adopting the Broward County Enhanced Local Mitigation Strategy Plan, which creates a comprehensive mitigation program minimizing the impact of natural and technological disasters through the distribution of grant funds for implementation of requested, needed, and town-approved mitigation projects within the town of Southwest Ranches, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documentation necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Public comment? Seeing none. Hearing none. Russell, call a roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any alterations or corrections from the audience? Counsel, none? Call a roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And guess what? You guys got to stay here for the rest of the night.
Wait a minute, Gary. The carrier pigeons on the way. The carrier pigeons on the way, Gary. It'll be there. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I had a great night and, you know, looking forward to this fight coming forward. We'll stop it, one way or the other. We'll get it stopped. Thank you.